There you go, just.
All right, I think we're ready to go now. Would you please join me in the salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Laura, would you do a roll call, please?
What they're seeing is that left computer. They're not seeing Alan or anything.
Alan Bongio?
Present.
Ronnie Meldrum?
Present.
Noah Leibman?
I'm here.
Mike Meldrum?
Here.
Peggy O'Neill?
Here.
Brian Mitchell?
Present.
And Melanie Edinger?
Present.
Thank you, Laura. Any agenda modifications tonight?
We have no modifications to the agenda.
No modifications. So, we have, we will move on to public comment. This is for anything that is not on the agenda. So, anybody that would like to address the commission, now is your chance. We have a head. So, Public 5288, go ahead and speak.
I'm back. How you doing, Alan, Commission?
I should have placed a bet.
Consistent at least, you know. I highly recommend when you do the flag salute, this is not on the agenda as far as technique, that you have one person do it because otherwise you're coming in with backbeat and jumbled in. And I thought I'd let you know that seems to work better in many of these forums to just have the one person do it, usually the chair. Mute everybody else. We're on Channel 11. I thought we might be on 10, but I found this on 11. Thought I'd inform anybody out there who hadn't found this. Of course, they may be able to go there if they went to. I did want to make mention of a couple of things that happened today during the zoning administrators' meeting. There was an approval of, I believe, 7.2 acres worth of RRR, a very interesting project. I still will assert that any project of that size should come before you folks because now that they've permitted one acre of that, the project's approved. And basically, it's ministerial permits for the other remaining acres of that. So, I think there was one acre permitted, so you've got whatever that comes out to, 6.82 acres left that will be permits over the counter. It's a dry land farming, and I had no problem especially with that. But I also think it'd be good for you folks to at least acknowledge these projects to promote them. I've always been a big fan of the RRR when done appropriately, and this one appeared to have been done so. There was one other topic on the meeting that I objected to because it was a generator project. And even though it went back to 100, the applicant did not bother to attend the meeting. And I thought John was going to put some constraints on there, but he didn't, John Ford, the director. But he didn't just because the member wasn't present to communicate with. And that, in my opinion, should have been tabled until the applicant showed enough respect or acknowledgement to participate in the public process. I also wanted to bring forward to you some projects that may be happening, I believe, one on August 6th. This is in the Maple Creek area. These are new grows. I thought we were getting new grows out of the woods and out of these areas. In my understanding, there's quite a few other large grows. This is a two-acre grow, mixed light. I think 2,332 gallons worth of water is what's being used for the grow possibly. Diesel generators involved. Of course, I'm all after solar, especially on a new one. Why would a new one, when they're investing these days, spend the money for diesel generators when they should go to solar right now? So, when these come before you, I hopefully you will address those particular topics. Shouldn't be there at all. And the other thing is cumulative effect. I've been told by staff there are other significant grows in the same area that are being proposed and will be being brought forward individually. And of course, I always have a problem with that happening when you know they're in the works, but we're not doing cumulative effects. This particular one has 20 employees, the largest commercial venture in the area as far as I could tell and confirmed with staff. They weren't aware of any others that size. And so, you may be having a whole bunch of those up in the hills. This is in a critical watershed. This watershed is Maple Creek. It goes into Humboldt County's Mad River and is part of the water that's being used for us. Not an appropriate place for these things. They don't belong up there, but I guess people are still attempting to permit them. Thank you for my opportunity to comment on these items, which are not on your agenda or consent calendar today.
Thank you, Kent. Anybody else have anything to bring up in public comment? I see a hand from a panelist, so go ahead.
I just wanted to very quickly chime in and say, without knowing the details or agreeing substantively with what Kent just said, I actually really appreciate him bringing our attention to the projects that are approved in the zoning administration meetings. I kind of realize I should be tuning in as avidly as he does, and I didn't today, obviously. So, I just wanted to thank him for bringing a couple of those issues to our attention.
Thank you, Noah. Anybody else have any comments? Seeing none, I will close the public comment, and we will move on to new business and the 2018-2019 General Plan and Housing Element Annual Progress Reports.
Good evening, Colonel.
Staff is.
I'm not sure if John wants to say a few things first, but I'm prepared to do a.
Can't barely hear you, Michelle.
Oh, sorry. Is this better? Can you hear me now?
Little bit.
Okay, let's try this again. Can you hear me now?
Speak loud.
All right.
There you go.
I'll scare my kids. So, I'm not sure if Director Ford wants to make a few comments beforehand. I do have a brief presentation. I know you have a full agenda. Even though there's not a lot of numbers, there's some substantive items on your agenda. So, unless there's, Director Ford wants to say a thing, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen, and hopefully you guys can hear me. Get to the right PowerPoint. Can you guys, can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. So. Okay, so the matter before you is the 2018 and 2019 General Plan and Housing Element Annual Progress Reports. These are to fulfill a statutory requirement that jurisdictions file these annual reports with the state every year. They're actually considered by the legislative body of the jurisdiction and ultimately filed. The deadline for filing is April 1st every year. It's, state law doesn't actually stipulate that the legislative body hear the reports before filing. But, so the Board of Supervisors heard the report June 2nd. In the case of the Housing Element Annual Progress Report, there are, the timely filing of the annual progress report for the housing element is very critical. It's a threshold requirement for eligibility for pretty much most state housing programs. So, the purpose of the General Plan Annual Progress Report is to review the progress the jurisdiction has made on implementing its general plan and to, you know, give an overview of its consistency with current state law. As I think many of the members of the commission are familiar, that's a very evolving area in the state. So, and also, the General Plan Annual Progress Report provides the Board of Supervisors and the committee an opportunity to input. It's in a transparency and accountability document. It could surface the need for course adjustments in its implementation. So, I'm going to first go over, give an overview of the Housing Element Annual Progress Report and then give a summary on the general plan. So, to provide some clarification, so the Housing Element Progress Report, the ones that are in your packet, they're for years and calendar years 2018 and 2019. These are the final two years of what's called the fifth cycle of the housing element, which ran from June 2014 to June 2019. And then, in August 2019, it was the beginning of the sixth cycle housing element, which runs until 2027. As members of, number of the members of the commission that now, before participating this evening, actually participated in the public hearings for the adoption of the housing element. So, this table shows the county's RENA targets for the fifth cycle, which is shown in the blue, and then the actual progress that was made. This was, what this means is the number of building permits that were issued for housing in units based on different income categories that are required to keep track of. So, the column for moderate is green. It highlights how far over and that we were over in our production of moderate housing units. So, while we were over, you know, this represents housing units that increase in the inventory that are horrible, that folks, they're moderate income. So, even though we don't get points for it, it still improves the inventory and availability for housing in our community. So, again, looking over the timeframe of 2014 to 2019, this graph shows the number of housing units that were produced over the years below. Number of production year, building permits issued being 2016. And then, we had an increase in 2019 was our max. I can't, I think the value was 219. And so, that works out to an average of 124 units annually and a median of 111 units annually. The blue line at the bottom, if you can see that, represents the building permits issued for accessory dwelling units. It sort of mirrors that for the primary units, or I mean, for the other all housing units. Here, this graph just shows it kind of blown up and zoomed into accessory dwelling units. And so, it kind of mimics what we saw in the previous graph. So, so these next couple of slides zoom in to calendar years 2018 and 2019. That is because in 2017, there was a housing package passed at the state that changed dramatically the reporting requirements of jurisdictions on their housing units. They added, amongst other things, we had to report out the number of housing units applied for in the reporting period. That wasn't a previous requirement. Previously, we only reported the building permits issued. And so, the chart on the upper left shows the breakdown of the units applied for, building permits and planning permits by income categories. These are estimates based on the size of the units mostly, except for in the case of very low-income, deed-restricted units. These are a Danco project out on the Samoa Peninsula. We see, as you can see, especially for above moderate, for 2019, a pretty big uptick that we expect and correlates to probably what were the changes, the pretty big changes in state law, regard, a new mandate for providing solar units for new residential construction. And the table on the bottom right shows by year again, those building permits applied for and planning permits applied for by the types of housing units. So, you can see again, a pretty big uptick year over year for single-family dwellings and whatnot. So, this, these two charts are actually the building permits issued for these two years. And so, again, we see in 2019, the 79 units for Danco. We have a big jump in moderate over that year. A lot of these units, this 103, represent the Garden Apartments project out in Myrtle Town. It's a multi-family project in the coastal zone. And then, the types of housing units, we see that in 2019, it's in gray, but this number is mostly garden apartments and Samoa Vance Avenue. That's the Danco project, the type of housing. That's five or more units, so multifamily. So. I'm going to give a brief stat to the general plan. It was adopted in October 2017. The planning period for general plan is typically 20 years. Sorry, going over my. The State General Plan guidelines will come, so one big difference between the the reporting requirements for the general plan over the housing element is the general plan. They have guidelines like what you should report. In the case of the housing element, the contents and the forms are mandated by state law. There's no discretion or how you present the data for housing elements. It's all prescribed. So, there's some more flexibility oftentimes, and as you saw in your packet, the general plan reporting takes more of a form of a narrative versus spreadsheets and whatnot. So, the State General Plan guidelines. So, one of the changes is, there were, at the time of adoption, there was eight mandatory elements. Subsequently, there was, they added a new element, mandatory element for environmental justice. At the time, the county was not obligated to prepare that element. But because of amendments and the way the statute is written, that is a future work that the county's undertaking will trigger that requirement to prepare an environmental justice element. That requirement has been baked into the long-range planning support program. Another important consistency requirement is what tribal consultation was undertaken for your general plan update and subsequent implementation. When the county updated the general plan, SB 18 and AB 52 initiated and completed. AB 52 and SB 18 continue to be implemented on a project-by-project basis. In the case of cannabis permitting, as you're commissioned familiar with, both our ministerial projects and the discretionary projects, those are all a consultation with our local tribes is undertaken. Another consistency component that we looked at was the collaborative planning for the military lands and facilities. The county's GIS has been updated and includes that data so that developers and project proponents and the public have easy access to this information and can account for this, any limitations that would be imposed, account for that early on in the process. It's mostly over flight paths is really it. The only on-ground military installation is the one over by Sequoia Zoo, Park Zoo. As far as major accomplishments, what progress has been made? So, the county has updated the zoning regulations and maps. These are important updates as they maintain consistency between the general plan and zoning regulations. They operationalize the general plan so it can be implemented on a day-to-day basis to get to accomplish that. Numerous public workshops were held across the county. There's also, these amendments included consistency for open space, airport safety, and whatnot. 2018 kicked off the comprehensive multi-jurisdictional climate action plan, and work on the climate action plan continues. Also undertaking work on sea level rise, continued support for problemistic tsunami inundation mapping. Work started and was completed on the industrial hemp ordinance and moratorium. Late last year, work began on the small cannabis, commercial cannabis farmer amendment. And that is continuing forward. Also, another important work program that was started in 2019 that implements, in this case specifically, the McKinleyville Community Plan is the Town Center Plan, or Town Center Ordinance. That work started in coordination with the McKinleyville Municipal Advisory Committee. Also, staff continued work with local community services districts and fire protection districts on infrastructure planning. Work was undertaken for boundary alignment updates, so the fire protection district boundaries matched their service area and increased fire district revenue to support sustained delivery of services. And that's pretty much what I thought. There's, sorry for the abrupt conclusion here, but I'm happy to take any questions, though, maybe.
I have a question. Do you count the tribe's low-income or very low-income residences that they're building in your plan? Because I know, at least with the Uroq tribe, they're building nine this year, and they would meet that very low-income category. They don't come through the county to get a permit, but they're still in the county.
As I believe the way statute is written is we have to, we could look at incorporating that into the housing element. You have to do that, and obviously, in collaboration with the two entities. And you would ultimately, I think, HCD has to give approval for that. Lands within, like the Hoopa Squirt, we don't count. So, I think at this point, we're only able to count those that come through our building permit process. But that is something that's, I know there's been some discussion about.
Well, it would just work towards meeting the goals.
Right. Yeah.
In that category, because it seems like that category is kind of low.
Yeah.
Anybody else have questions for Michelle? I have a question for you, Michelle. This is Alan. I noticed that the projects that you, the two major projects that you used for the low numbers were the Danco project out on the spit and Kramer project. Now, some of those projects, I don't know all the rules with HCD, but those, is it if they're permitted is when you can use them? Or is it, do they have to be done by a certain time? I'm just curious what.
So, the, for them to populate and be shown as progress to meeting your RENA, the building, it's the building permit being issued. They, they do, we do have to report the certificates of occupancy or building permit final, actual, any like indicator of actual readiness for occupancy. That is actually a reporting requirement. So, that's not something that was presented this evening. But that is an interesting, how many of those building permits do translate into occupancy? The state's not asking for us to make that. I think locally, that would be interesting to see. But the state's not looking for us to report that, which maybe we don't want them to make us do that. In terms of, if you don't build them, they don't count, or something like that. You issue the permit, but you don't build them within two years, and so, they're subtracted. They don't do that. But maybe they're going to do that to us.
Thank you. Any other questions for Michelle? Yeah. Seeing no other questions from the commission, I will open it up to the public for public comment on this. I see one hand up, and I know that number. Go ahead, Kent.
Thank you for recognizing the number. I just want to let you guys know, your video is skipping out. So, the public has not had full access to the graphs you have. That stops and starts on a regular basis on Channel 11, which is where I'm streaming this for the video part. You know, this is a real interesting thing. And of course, the state probably by tomorrow, somebody's going to call them. I don't know who that guy might be to go ahead and make sure that they go ahead and close that loophole. But of course, we should not get credit for those things if they're not built. I mean, that's just kind of common sense. Part of the problem we have is we are working with a, basically, a stale process here. And our general plan took so long to put together that I have a hard time really saying it was accurately updated to reflect many of the uses and needs regarding housing that we're currently going through. Now, of course, you guys are making great projects on your potential, maybe tiny homes, secondary dwelling units. That's going to make the difference, I think, as far as making those numbers really easily accomplished. So, I look forward to that moving forward, and I hope we some projects will come before you folks in the not terribly distant future to enable the people, the workers out there who are willing to put their time, effort, and sweat equity into projects of that nature and maybe be financially viable. I do have some problems with, and I'm going to bring it up on a specific thing, on another thing. But when we have areas that are, do not have a single access out of an area and to have very large development in those areas, and those are in a tsunami zone where the roadways and access and infrastructure would most likely be eliminated, not necessarily the structures, but the accesses, I do have a problem with us planning anything that enables or allows those housing kind of things to happen. I also think that a biggest, one of the biggest things we need to see on our housing is what I refer to as connectivity. In other words, if you have to go three miles from a project to get to a gas station, a supermarket, or the other necessities that people need, that needs to be a, have connectivity to those sources. And probably shouldn't even be happening because I refer to that as sprawl. You have a project that hopefully will be brought forward sometime in the future, out in the cotton area. And when you get to that one, I call that anti-sprawl because everybody has acknowledged, to me at least, that a lot of those things are within two blocks, three blocks, four blocks, walking distance. Those things, I don't categorize as sprawl the same way I do the other projects. So, I, hopefully, we will start to update our general plan way before the timeframe. As I've said many times before, I don't think cannabis has even mentioned the word in there, marijuana two or three times. And I think we really need to update everything related to those land use issues, including how housing fits into those land use issues. A lot of our sprawl and housing out there is unpermitted. It's in these areas. It's happened without. It's happened without any oversight from the planning department and we do have major problems out there. A lot of people are not availing themselves of the ability to, I guess, grandfather those in and get the permits. John Ford said some people are, but I believe it's a small portion. So we need to kind of push people in that direction to have safe housing, not just housing period. Thank you for my opportunity to speak on this general plan report.
Anybody else like to speak on this issue? Seeing none, I will close public participation and bring it back to the commission. Does Michelle, did she have more presentation to do or she was done? So.
Alan, I'd just like to say one thing. It's good to see more housing units going up throughout the county compared to five years ago when we were virtually at a standstill almost. So it's good to see that housing there and I'm looking forward to getting the ADU ordinance on through so that we can see even more housing available.
Thank you, Mike. Anybody else have anything to say? Noah, go ahead.
Yeah, sure. Well, I just, I, this is not anything really new, but I just really appreciated the point that Peggy brought up. You know, Humboldt County is, is fairly unique in terms of the tribal population that we have and the number of recognized tribal entities. And, and so it, it, you know, and, and they, they are a place that obviously is in need of some of the policies that, that are designed to implement more housing. So I just, I just, you know, I think it would be worth our trouble as a county to try to figure out both how to get those units counted towards our goals since they, they make up a not insignificant percentage of the population, but, but also perhaps to find other ways to, to collaborate between the county and the tribes to accelerate or, or use that, that process. That's all. Thanks.
Anybody else? Well, seeing none, we don't have an action to take on this other than to say we got the presentation. And so thank you, Michelle, for that and we will move on to our next item. And so the next item is the Samoa Pacific Group Coastal Development Permit and Development Agreement. Take a staff report, please.
Evening commissioners, can you hear me okay?
Hear you loud and clear.
Okay, thanks. Okay. So the project before you tonight is the Coastal Development Permit and Development Agreement for the phased subdivision of Master Parcel III encompassing approximately 185 acres in the town of Samoa. As you may remember, the same project was presented to the Planning Commission back in February. That included the tentative map and planned development permit approval. That would create 332 lots. Tonight, the project includes the Coastal Development Permit and Development Agreement, the final components of project approval. This project is the same as that approved in February. However, the coastal permit had certain pre-conditions applied to it that were required prior to presenting it for decision. Since the planning commission hearing in February, the two remaining requirements, specifically the issuance of the wastewater discharge permit by the Regional Water Quality Control Board and the formation of the Peninsula Community Services District have been completed. Therefore, staff is recommending, recommending approval of the project tonight. And with that, I'll try to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Any questions for staff? Anybody have any questions on the commission? Bonnie, I see your hand up.
Not a question so much as more, more of a comment that back when I was on the harbor commission and that property was purchased, you know, it just seemed like it was just 800-pound elephant that nobody could tackle. It was an enormous project. I mean, the fire suppression, the wastewater. It, it was a huge project and here we are all these years later that, you know, is providing affordable housing and, and a, and nice little town. It just seems like it's a, a great collaborative effort here on everybody's part. I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments? All right. Seeing none, I will open it for public comment on the project. And we have one attendee and guess who it is? You're up, Kent.
Good guess. I've always referred to this as the Samoa Sprawl Project or more recently especially assigned it, but with just a definition of the term. What I brought to you before, this project started in 2001, I believe. Bonnie Neely pushed it through the Coastal Commission. And I can understand this portion of the project, which is splitting up the houses and selling those off to the public. The rest of the development I have a hard problem with. I also have a problem with, it's not clear to me whether some of these special things that are supposed to happen during this project are happening now because there's a, a public perception out there that all we may get out of this is the whatever affordable housing, small thing we have, whatever eighty-six or whatever, plus these things split off and attempted to be sold. Having procured a kind of apples and apples house down in the town of Scotia, company town, same kind of thing. People will find that your services for water, sewer and your district services can be close to prohibitive. So that's something that I find interesting. This project shouldn't have happened for the following reasons, a sprawl. You're, I believe, at least three miles away from the services that were required, would be required of a current development these days without being considered nothing but a sprawl project. I don't believe there's a gas station. I don't believe there's a bank. I don't believe there are anything to speak of as far as restaurants adjacent to this project. No supermarket. Just about every single need is now channeled for people to get back into Eureka and Arcata. And, and, and as this 800-pound elephant has a problem because it's very scary for the people to try and either bike or to walk into Eureka. A lot of them end up going into Arcata instead. And, and when you were addressing this other project before this three-quarters of an acre, a little bit of trail, it would make quite clear that there's no real intent, purpose or design, maybe intent, but no design, nothing forthcoming to enable these people to safely bike or walk or push their shopping carts into either Arcata or Eureka. This project should have been conditioned upon connectivity that would allow for this minimal carbon imprint. I don't know how you can really find that this overall project without having the bus, hopefully the bus thing's being put in now. My understanding is you don't even have transit out to this area. It passes through Samoa, it doesn't stop. The people in Samoa have wanted to get it. I would condition this and put an additional condition in a minimum that the transit service be provided to this, these people out there and that to make up for not having trails or not having anything, that the developer go ahead and, and have a, a zero fee service there and have whatever you could determine the people need for that service. It just is unbelievable that that's not being provided as far as I can tell. You're supposed to find the finding requirements consistent with the general plan and local coastal plans, consistent with zoning regulations, conformity with the public interest and general welfare, not being detrimental to health, public safety or welfare of persons residing in the vicinity, not adversely affecting the orderly development of property and consistency with state law governing development agreements. I don't know whether any of those findings can be made. Really, if you really look at the project with endangering the public health, safety and welfare without having connectivity, this is one of my biggest concerns, I just mentioned, to have a single access roadway that in, in all indications I have would be eliminated during this tsunami is, is not the place for people to be. It's, it's not a safe place, long-term wise, and to see further development beyond even, even the houses that are, are there. So I, I, I'm just, I mean, I'm asking that you at least at a minimum, put a condition on there that some kind of transit. So the people who want to get back and forth won't be endangering their life, safety and health there, life, the whole nine yards there as far as not having a safe way to get into town unless they're going to be driving three miles in a vehicle. So please put that condition on there at least. Thank you very much for my opportunity to speak. I do understand that this project is appealable to the Coastal Commission and I, I make recommendations sometimes, sometimes they have consequences, but I'm highly recommending that you take some of these things into consideration. It was under a 2001 general plan and things have changed since then. I, I'm not sure that it even conforms to a lot of parts of our current general plan. Thank you for my opportunity to speak on this.
Thank you, Kent. Anybody else from the public that would like to speak on this issue or the applicant or his agent? I see. Anybody? Mike, you're, I can see you waving at me, but okay, Dan Johnson's got his hand up, so I'll, go ahead, Dan.
Oh, there you go. Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yep, now.
Sorry about that. You know, I, I gotta say, you know, Mike's got some more information to.
We just went, we lost him.
As many of you are aware. And, and we, undo the video here. We've been working on the project since 2001 and that, after a while, I just get, you know, as a developer in the area that's probably doing more projects than most of the community put together, I get so, how do I want to say it? You know, infuriated by people who come up and speak about projects that don't really have any idea what the hell they're talking about. And I mean, we've got, we, all these claims that are being spoken about, no bus, no bus. Well, there is a bus stop that's going to be built with the new affordable housing project and we're going to have the bus service come from the bridge and come into the town, go through the town, pick up residents and then take them back out. Talk about no restaurant. Well, there's a cookhouse that's been out there for 80 years that probably half the people in the world have attended at some time. Talk about no sewer. Well, there's a brand-new sewer system that's currently under construction to the tune of about $3.5 million that is under construction as we speak. I mean, if you go out there and look, the tanks are in the ground, the, the, the buildings are being built. There's a, a, a new water system, the site is all prepped. The new water system is being installed as we speak, a new 300,000-gallon water tank. We talk about there's no gas station. Well, there is a gas station in the plan and there's a condition of approval with Coastal Commission to provide that before any new housing can be developed. We talk about there's no grocery store. Well, again, that's windbagging. There's a grocery store that's going to be built that's part of the conditions of approval of the, of the Coastal Commission permit that we have to put a grocery store in before any new projects can be built other than the affordable housing. Affordable housing was allowed to move forward with that. And so, and I could go on and on, but, but just about every item that the individual that just spoke talked about is absolutely not the case. And so, you know, I, I, I'm not, I won't go on, I won't waste any more time. I'll let Mike talk a little bit more without the emotion. But at the end of the day, this project meets every single requirement. It's a 160-page condition of approval from the Coastal Commission, received unanimous approval from the Coastal Commission, 14 to nothing vote when it went to them. The only unanimous approval at the time that that Coastal Commission had ever, had ever voted on. It's highly supported by all. And, and I would just wish that when people are going to waste your time and our time to have to talk about these, that they would take the time to come talk to the developer and understand the project before they get up and just say a bunch of BS that actually is not the case. So thank you for the opportunity to talk and I'll turn it over to Michael Hearn. Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, Dan brought up, are you talking to me or another?
No, we're in public, we're in public comment now and Michael Hearn was going to speak.
Sorry.
Okay, can you hear me okay now?
Yes.
Great, yeah, thank you. Well, Dan said most of what I was going to say. I think, you know, we're here tonight to get the LCP or the CDP approved, which will conform to the LCP. And the LCP, as Dan mentioned, has a grocery store, has a gas station, has a coffee shop, bus stops. And so that's what we're here to do is to, to approve a project that implements those conditions. And so I think the other part of this is, as Kent mentioned, it would be okay to subdivide the town, but he didn't want new residences. But the problem with that is there needs to be a critical mass to afford the new sewer system, to afford the new water system. The history of company towns like this, except Scotia is an exception, but the other ones is eventually they're torn down because they don't make sense to stand on their own. Companies run them at a loss as a benefit for their employees. And once they don't need that anymore, they just tear them down. Happened to Cornell, it's happened to a number of places, Falk. And so there aren't enough houses at Samoa to support all of the improvements that are needed. So the affordable housing project and the new houses are what it takes to form critical mass. There's a, the Community Services District has been formed to run these things and all of the financing has been figured out based on these numbers. And so really, this is the project that needs to be approved. And it really, it has been approved. You know, the subdivision is approved, the zoning is approved, the LCP is approved. What we're here today is to approve the CDP, which will implement the LCP. So I would just be here to answer any questions and ask for your vote on this, please.
Sorry, I was muted. Sorry about that. Is there any more public that would like to speak on this? If not, I will bring it back to the commission to ask any question, if they have any questions of the developer or his agent. Seeing no more, I will close public hearing. I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. And does the commission have any questions for the applicant or his agent?
Alan, Chairman, Bon Joo. So my questions that I wanted to make sure that I was reading things correctly in here about the transportation, the bus line, about the gas station, about the convenience store and all of that were correct. So I didn't have to ask that to make sure. I'd like to make the motion to make all the required findings for approval of the coastal permit, development permit and development agreement based on evidence in the staff report and public testimony and adopt the resolution approving the Samoa Pacific Group Coastal Development Permit subject to the recommended conditions and adopt the resolution to recommend the development agreement to the Board of Supervisors for approval.
Enthusiastic second.
We have a motion as second. Any discussion about the motion? Seeing none, I will call for the question. Laura, would you please do a roll call vote?
Alan Bon Joo?
Yes.
Ronnie Pellegrini?
Aye.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil?
No.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Melanie Gaver?
Yes.
Would appear the motion carries. Thank you guys for, and good luck with your project.
Could I ask a question?
Go ahead, Noah.
I mean, not that we need to take a whole lot more time on this, but, but I, I, was it Peggy who voted no? I just would have been curious to hear what her reason was, if that's, if, if that's appropriate.
I think I adjusted the last time this project came up. I, I am totally supportive of a project like this, I just think it's the wrong location. I think that it's in an area that, no matter if you have a tsunami plan or not, you're putting extremely, um, vulnerable people at risk, and, um, I just can't get over that. I, I like the project, I would love to say yes, it was hard to say no to it, but it's just something that I feel very strongly about.
Fair enough. Thanks for explaining that, I, I understand.
Thank you. Anything else on this issue? If not, we will move on to the next thing, and the next issue is accessory dwelling unit ordinance.
I'm, I'm having a little connectivity problems, can you hear me?
Can now, Michael.
Okay.
Mary coming on as well, or just you?
Uh, it's just going to be me for the moment, she's standing by, in case I was moving on. Uh, I'm, I'm going to share my screen if that's up.
Okay, thank you.
So where we left off at the last meeting, uh, in June, was, uh, at the point where we were discussing, uh, one of the special permit areas called out in the ADU ordinance is, uh, the Jacoby Creek, within the Jacoby Creek Community Plan. And what the, the way that the current draft is written is, it says ADUs in this area meet, must comply with the five-acre minimum density limits in the community plan. And the, the state law is very keen to, uh, not tie, or to overrule local density limits. And so, what we're suggesting is to modify the language, and this is alternative 7A, modify the language to say that within the Jacoby Creek Community Plan area, ADUs must comply with the policies of the Jacoby Creek Community Plan, which is in appendix C of the general plan. And then, as a part of this also is to include in the resolution of approval from the Planning Commission, a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors that they initiate an update of the, the Jacoby Creek Community Plan. And the reason for this is because presently, the, the five-acre density limit in the...
Michael, we can't hear you anymore. We hear you now. Yep, we can hear you now.
Okay, yeah, sorry, my internet is kind of unstable a little bit, but I'll plow through. Uh, so anyways, the Jacoby Creek Community Plan, right now, has a five-acre limit to protect water quality from the cumulative impacts of sewage disposal systems. And this is based on the Regional Board, uh, report that was done in 1978, which, uh, where they came up and tested the soils up here, and found that out of the 30 sites that they sampled, only two of them were capable of adequately treating sewage disposal. And there, and there had been, uh, several instances of failed septic systems, and so this community plan was written, and this is kind of, uh, using a hammer where a scalpel would be more preferable, and, and so that's what we're intending, um, to do with the community plan update. Uh, part of this recommendation is to, um, is to allow for the community to update their general plan, so that, uh, we're using a scalpel rather than a hammer, a five-acre hammer to, uh, protect water quality. And so, uh, that's, that is one of the alternatives. Your commission has also received testimony that, uh, the, 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 this special, just deleted from that, um, from having to get a special permit requirement, and, and there are pros and cons to each of these things. One, the, the pro side to, uh, modifying the, the language would be that it would maintain the protections of water quality that are now in the community, in the plan, and it would apply those to ADUs. Uh, the, uh, the con there is that it may unnecessarily restrict ADU development in Jacoby Creek. You got to get a special permit, so that's going to increase the fees, and that's a discretionary permit, and so, in theory, it could be disapproved. Um, if we were to just delete the language, then you're not conforming to the existing community plan, and so that's the con. The, on the pro side, though, is a... Or ADUs would be supported, and, and so...
Excuse me, Chair? Chair? Yes? Can, can we ask Michael to make a phone call in, to make it where we can hear him consistently?
Michael, did you hear that?
Yeah, I can, I can call in.
Yeah, it's just that he's breaking up a bit, and it's hard to catch it all.
Looks like he's getting his phone.
Yeah, that's a good, good suggestion. Let me, uh, let me call in here. I, I can keep, keep talking, maybe. Uh, okay, here we go.
Sure, go ahead, Brian.
So I was just wondering if, if Michael or the Director could answer the following question. If, in the Jacoby Creek area currently, if a homeowner wanted to build an addition on their home, meaning just add an extra room, what standards would you look at to see if the existing wastewater onsite septic system could handle that additional capacity?
Here by phone. We hear you twice, Michael.
Hey, Michael, go ahead and mute your, uh, computer.
Okay.
And then did you, or Mitchell's question?
And the question was... The question was... Repeat that again, sorry.
His computer's still not muted.
Yeah, so, Michael, my question was, if in the Jacoby Creek area, a homeowner wanted to build an additional, like, in addition to their home, what would you look at to make sure that their existing wastewater treatment system could handle that additional capacity?
That, that would be handled by the Department of Environmental Health.
But is it safe to assume that the homeowner would have to provide evidence to substantiate that their wastewater treatment system could handle the additional capacity before they would sign off on it?
Yes, that's right.
So I guess, um, I feel, oh, sorry, you can continue, I'll carry on later.
Okay. All right, and, so here's, uh, the slide back again, um, so these, these are the two options, is you can, uh, modify the language or delete it, and, uh, the public comment has favored, um, deleting it. We haven't heard any public comment that's expressed concerns, but, of, of course, we haven't engaged the community, you know, specifically in the Jacoby Creek area.
Michael, you're not up on the screen, the, your options are not up on the screen, so...
Oh, I'm sorry, may, I'm, I'm, I'm not sharing my screen anymore.
Well, you may have to go back to the computer.
Well, I've, I've got the computer, uh, uh...
Yeah, we can see him, so we should be able to see his screen.
But, let me, uh, get there. Can you see that now?
No.
And you still can't see it. Well, in any case, the, uh, you, you saw the, uh, the two options, one is to delete the, uh, the requirement that ADUs in Jacoby Creek get a special permit, they would be allowed as principally permitted, and the other alternative is to modify the language to take out the reference to density limits and just say that, uh, policies, that the ADU needs to comply with the policies of the community plan and, um, and tie it to the protection of waste, or protection of water quality as opposed to density.
All right, well, this is, uh, one of the, the, uh, issues that the public has commented on, so I'm going to open this up for public comment, um, gets their input and then bring it back to the Commission. So with that, um, I will open up, the first caller is Jason. Go ahead, Jason.
Hello, uh, thank you for, um, the opportunity to speak. Uh, I just have a couple of questions. One, I, I would obviously like to see the, uh, that language removed from the ordinance as it, as it stands, uh, that five-acre, uh, density plan. My question is, uh, what is the policy if the five-acre density is removed from the ordinance? Specifically, what are those compliance parameters for the JCCP if not the five-acre density? Also, I, uh, submitted a letter to the Planning Department and just wanted to know if, uh, if you guys had received that in, uh, in your packet. Thank you, I guess I'll yield the remainder of my time.
All right, um, we have three callers, it looks like, so I think we'll take all three of them, and then staff can, can answer those questions. Uh, the next one is, uh, 5288. Go ahead, Kent.
You thought you got rid of me? Nah, that, no matter what Johnson said about me, I'm still hanging around here. Um, I also, uh, support not having any specific criteria different in the Jacoby Creek area, same as the last speaker. Uh, be quite honest with you, I do have a dog in that fight, uh, my family and other family members have property in that area, and so, so if I was sitting up there, I'd probably have to abstain from voting or recuse myself, but I don't, since I'm not. But I think everybody should be treated equally, not just taking one area or another area. Strongly applaud moving forward with this. Um, look forward to having, you know, areas, actually some areas possibly, and, and this was a question for staff. If we have, uh, property that's a fee-titled property on a tribal thing, and we want to do a, a tribal project for affordable housing, uh, let's say hypothetically, on the Hoopa Reservation, a few acres up there, um, is that something that would then count toward your Reno, Reno numbers also, as, as was brought up a little bit earlier? If not, I highly recommend that you, uh, enable that to happen, so that you'll get credit for those. Um, and lastly, I, I, I guess, I guess I'll call Dan Johnson tomorrow and see when he's going to put the gas station, the, I did make a mistake, I want to apologize, there is a restaurant, how could I forget that wonderful restaurant? Anyway, thank you for the opportunity to speak on this particular topic.
Thank you, Kent. Uh, the next speaker would be Larry Henderson. Go ahead, Larry. There you go, take your mute off. Larry, go ahead. He's unmuted.
Can you ask him to call back in?
Yeah, Larry, what, if you can hear me, uh, try and call back in. Um, we'll give it a second here and see if you can get back through. I know you had a lot to say on this issue. So, got a hand up from, I'm not sure if that's Melanie. Oh, Mark's going, I, I, go ahead, Mark, hopefully Larry will get back through.
I may have to turn it off here.
Can you hear me? Uh, can you guys hear me? Can anyone hear me?
That was Larry.
Uh, this is, this is Mark, I don't know if anyone can hear me.
Can you hear me now?
Okay, we got both of you on, so, since, okay, go ahead, Larry, and then Mark will have you afterwards.
I'm so sorry, you should, you should practice before you get on, but, uh, I do have a couple, quite a few questions, actually, but I will, I will try to keep it as short as I can. Uh, earlier today, planning informed me that they approved an ADU on a five-acre parcel in the Jacoby Creek area. They said that while the ADU, that particular ADU is not consistent with the five-acre density limitation of the plan, uh, the state's current ADU law does not allow consideration of the general plan density and review of ADUs. Uh, the obvious question I have is why do we require compliance with the Jacoby Creek density with, regardless of whether it's spelt out five acre, it's referred to as policy, when that requirement, um, conflicts with the state law? But I have a more important question about what planning is saying. Planning's explanation for why the ADU permitted earlier today is not consistent with the plan is because the community... because the cumulative impacts of the septic system on water quality was not addressed, planning is asserting that all new development exceeding the five acre density limit must address the cumulative impacts of septic systems on the water quality of the Jacoby Creek area, I would like to know who says so, and when did they say it, they referred to earlier to the, a special study, specifically like thirty parcels, we've asked for years to see the documentation and see the study, I haven't seen it, I don't know of anybody else that has seen that plan, I would like to see it and review it to make sure we're not fabricating something here, my question would be, has the planning commission seen that study, that study needs to be put on record so that we can all look at it, I definitely agree that the general plan or the Jacoby Creek Community Plan needs to be reviewed and updated, there's no question about that, we just object to putting the special restriction on until that's accomplished, my question back to the planning department would be, what does compliance with the Jacoby Creek plant policies look like, and I think that was the question that Mr. Valentini, I believe his name was, was trying to ask, so staff has suggested to change the language, to delete the reference to the five acre density, and replace it with the question, the policy, I don't know what the difference is, obviously, my request is still to delete that section, but at the most, I would hate to see anything done until we actually see what study has been, to demonstrate that there is a need for some density restriction, if there is a need, is it applicable to other areas in this, in the county, specifically under that forty year old waiver prohibition area, I don't think so, I do know, not recalling specific studies, that ended up or recommended a five acre density, I am aware of studies that were done, I am aware of pollution that was done forty years ago, and I think that the solution at that time was, let's comply strictly with the standards that are applicable, that's what the waiver prohibition has done, I don't see that there's been any problem created since the forty years, anyway, I appreciate the opportunity to talk, and I'm sorry I took so long, but thank you, I think I'm through.
Thank you, Larry, now, Mark, it's your turn.
Thank you very much, I really appreciate you all, and the work that you're doing, I hope you all understand we're really combating our tech deficiencies here, so a lot of problems with trying to get online and answer questions and hear things, and I appreciate that, I would really hate if fire and health were planning, because the planning department is doing extraordinary work, it's very complicated, and the knee jerk reactions of health department and fire department are going to eliminate that, access ADUs versus junior ADUs, I think those are two separate items, twelve hundred square foot versus four hundred square foot, septic versus compost, you know, we spent two years talking to the health department about compost, and then Mario and Melissa just went ahead and did whatever the hell they wanted, it was unfortunate, you know, because the committee was very much trying to inform them as much as possible, that compost is something that we need desperately up here, is a choice of water for the fish or water for agriculture, which is a, something that is a choice, the fish don't have a choice, I appreciate the work you're doing, thank you.
Thank you, is there any more attendees? But that's already. All right, I don't usually do this, but I'm going to allow you, Jason, to have a second, make it short, though.
Yeah, my, yeah, I just had one quick addendum, that was based on Mr. Henderson's comments, I tried to find the data for this special study in the Jacoby Creek, and I could not find that information anywhere, so I would love for that study to be made public record, so everyone can take a look at it and be able to make, you know, decisions in the light, as opposed to, you know, decisions based on studies from forty years ago, that there are no records of, or none that I could find, and then that's my only comment, and thank you for the additional time.
Thank you, seeing no more, oh, yep, we do have one more, Tony, go ahead.
Yes.
You're on, Tony.
Hang on a second. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, I thank you very much, I've been in Jacoby Creek since nineteen sixty-four, I was here, of course, then, when the community water was brought out here, I've never heard of any study that was done, my impression throughout this time that it was more of a political decision than a water quality issue, I just, from a, I look at these things from a practical standpoint, and that would be that if the county can quit discouraging the development of ADUs in this area, we would see more of them built, that would require what are mostly sixties and early sixties and earlier vintage septic systems to be brought up to modern code, so by giving people, by taking away the disincentive to, to either expand their properties, I mean, same thing happens if you put an addition on a house, you have to prove septic system meets modern standards, if people were building ADUs and their septic systems were, would have to be upgraded, in terms of being clear, my property is the one that Michael was referring to, and Larry was referring to, that went through planning to get an ADU, I'm going to replace my nineteen thirty-nine vintage septic system with one that has already been approved by environmental health, which is going to be much better, much better in terms of water quality in Jacoby Creek than what I've got now, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Seeing no more hands up, I'm going to bring this back to the commission and the staff to have a chance to answer those questions that were asked, and then let the commission ask questions, so, Michael, I think it's, you're up.
Okay, the question that Larry brought up about how come we're able to approve an ADU under the state laws, but then at the same time require a special permit for an ADU under our local regulations, the reason that that is a viable alternative is because the, the state law says, on the one end, local jurisdictions need to not deny ADUs based on general plan density, and right now, that is, there is no if, ands, or buts, according to the state law, but they also say at the, at the same time, that local ordinances can be developed, and you can be more discretionary in approval of ADUs with a local ordinance, but only where those, that discretion is necessary in order to protect public health and safety, and so, in this case, the state law doesn't allow us to invoke any discretion that the Jacoby Creek Community Plan identifies as necessary to protect water quality, the current state law, which applies in Humboldt County, does not give us that latitude, but under our local ordinance, that can be, that can be built into the ordinance, and so, that's what our recommendation is, and really, it's, it's in order to align best with the Jacoby Creek Community Plan policies, but in the end, if your planning commission feels that the standards that the Division of Environmental Health applies to septic systems, to approval of septic systems, if you feel that that's adequate to protect the cumulative impacts of water quality in the Jacoby Creek Community Plan, you can recommend that the board delete that, as delete the special permit requirement for ADUs in Jacoby Creek, so it is a decision point that's available to your commission.
I support removing it and allowing the environmental health department to permit based on their current standards, I think that it's unnecessary that it be singled out, there's plenty of other areas in the county that have issues, and I think that they should have to go through the environmental permitting process, and if they pass that, then they should have an ADU, a second.
We have, I think we're a little early in this, the director has some things that he wanted to say, and he actually asked if we could take a break so that he can talk with staff on this issue, so I'm going to say we're going to take a ten minute break right now, then we'll come back and we'll take up this issue again, but I think we're a little bit early on making motions at this point, so we will take a ten minute break, thank you. Back up. You ready?
Yeah.
All right, we're back in session, so the director did some checking, and he has some information he'd like to report to us, and then we'll bring it back to the commission.
Yeah, so I'm going to ask Michael to correct me if I say anything incorrectly here, but it seems that the specific situation that we have in our records is that we have a resolution from the Regional Water Quality Control Board indicating their concern is based upon a technical study, that, that study, we do not have, and so I am sensitive to the fact that we have a political document without the technical background, so at this point, it's very hard for us to take a firm stand and, and say that there's a study that says you can't go forward with allowing ADUs in the Jacoby Creek Community Plan area.
All right, with that new information, bring it back to the commission, any more discussion? Sorry about that feedback, we, we had a motion, I believe somebody made a motion, it sounded like a second, so there's no other discussion, I'll entertain that motion in a second, Noah has his hand up.
Yeah, I did. Sorry, I turned off my video because it seemed my internet connection was not great, I mean, I think I've read all the material, I think I understand the issue, but I, but I feel, I feel a little bit like we've gotten, can, can, it would be helpful to me if we could have, and I know there are some unknown factors involved in this, because they involve other departments, other agencies, other levels of government, but I really would appreciate if we could just have a really clear restatement of what we think our best educated guess would be about the difference on the ground for an individual landowner in the Jacoby Creek area, in their wish to put in, to, and Brian asked, and I kind of thought Brian might chime in to elaborate, but Brian was like, if you want to do an addition on your house, and that has to go through a certain kind of septic review, what would that require under one or the other of the alternatives we're considering, or, let's just say, if you have a parcel that can support a totally separate addition, what would be the actual impact in terms of what you have to go through to put that in under one or the other of the alternatives that we're considering here, I mean, I feel like, and maybe I'm wrong, but I feel like there's been a little bit of smoke and mirrors thrown up by people saying like, you shouldn't prohibit us from, from, from building an addition or a second unit, that's so unfair, but I don't think we are prohibiting it, we're just requiring a separate level of review, and so it would be really helpful for me to be reminded what the separate level of review looks like, depending on what the addition is, what the separate ADU structure is, under one or the other of the alternatives that we're considering, please.
Take the first shot at that, Michael, if you can answer any holes that I leave, two scenarios that you're asking about, scenario number one is somebody that's simply expanding their house, expanding the number of water facilities within their house, number of bedrooms, and so there would need to be a design study done to see if the septic system can support that, and if the amount of volume coming out of that septic system would interact with groundwater or not, so that's a pretty straightforward study, the thing that frankly...
And if, sorry to interrupt you, John, but I mean, and so there's a study done to determine whether there would be potentially some interaction, but if there's no problem, presumably, then it's the end of the, of the question, if there is a problem, then what happens?
Well, then, they may not be able to expand.
Okay, even if they want to update their, their septic system?
If they, there are things that you can do typically, and some septic systems can get into a package treatment kind of system that get very, very expensive.
But, but I think what you're saying is that, you know, septic systems can only deal with the soil around them, and so if you have a problem with the soil around you, replacing the septic tank isn't going to solve that problem, right, so you can't do it if you're going to be, if your soils will result in leaching, you know, pollutants into the groundwater.
Either into the groundwater or surface water, correct?
Okay, okay, that's one scenario, thank you.
So the other scenario that we're obligated to think about as we consider ADUs is the possibility of adding multiple new units, and as somebody mentioned relative to a different project, the cumulative impact, and so what happens when you have a piece of property that, say, puts in a twelve hundred square foot house, second unit, the equivalent of a whole new house, and yes, that still needs to go through the same kind of review, but if those are concentrated together, and, you know, even though incrementally, there's not an impact cumulatively, there could be an impact to surface water and or groundwater, and I think that was the concern of the regional board when the original study was done, in fact, as I am informed now, the original recommendation coming out of the Jacoby Creek Community Advisory Agency that advised on the adoption of the plan was that there should be no new development in Jacoby Creek Community Plan Area, and it was a compromise that the planning commission and the board of supervisors to change it to a density, and so we're living with that compromise right now, but one of the things, and maybe this is more information than you want, but the state doesn't allow us to regulate water quality issues through density relative to second dwelling units, it's got to be done through another means, and, and, and so that is the nature of the tension that we have here, and the question is, what is the cumulative impact? And the question is, what is the cumulative impact of an area that we know has shallow groundwater, has surface water, and has the ability to interact with septic ethone? It's not, it's no longer just one house at a time. It's now, what happens if 10% develop second units? And the other thing that I think one of the members of the public mentioned is that ADUs and JADUs are different. JADUs are very much akin to a home expansion. And, and so that's another nuance that you may want to consider.
All right, I see. You have any more questions, Noah, because Mike has his hand up as well.
No, okay, I mean, I, I, yes, thank you, Alan, and I want to let Mike talk. But, but the last question I want to ask, which is a little bit of a totally different subject. But I understand that part, or, or at least it has been said that part of the reason for the rules that went into effect, whether they were right or not, was an expectation that the Jacoby Creek area, the Bayside area would, might be annexed. And I just, I just want, but that's, that all was a long time ago. I'm kind of curious to know if there's any information that's recent and current and, and credible about the possibility of a municipal sewer system being implemented there? Is that, is that just not in the cards for the foreseeable future? Whether, whether annexed or not, I mean, a municipal sewer system is the issue. So that's what I'm asking.
So relative to Arcata, they can't not serve outside of their corporate boundary. So it would be an annexation. I'm not aware at this point, maybe Michael has some awareness I'm, I'm not aware of, of Arcata pursuing annexation in this area. Can't hear you, Mike.
I'll try, I'll try going through the internet here.
Now.
Yeah, Arcata has no ability to expand its wastewater treatment capacity to accommodate Jacoby Creek's growth.
This is Chair. I, I'll comment to that before I go to Mike. Being on the Board of Home and Community Service District, I know that Arcata, I'm going to say it's two years ago or so, took that area into their sphere of influence though, or at least are, we're looking at taking it in. Because I don't think it was so much that they wanted to annex the area. It was more that they wanted to possibly control what happened there if I have a, a sphere of influence over it. So that may help or may not. I don't, I don't know exactly whatever came about of it. But anyhow, Mike, you're up. You've been waiting patiently.
Okay, so I've got a couple of questions. One of them, well, several of them Noah hit on. But one of the other additional questions I have is if it is a compromise to where that is taken off and it needs to go to the Jacoby Creek Community Plan for additional information down the road? I mean, we would need to approve now, and I wanted to know exactly, Michael, what that would be, what that type of motion would be if we were to include to where the Jacoby Creek JCCP was consulted or needed to bring in more information? Question two is along those lines. What would they be able to do in order to allow the ADU units without special permits to be built?
Yeah, through the chair, I can answer that. The, the, the recommendation would be for your planning commission to recommend the Board of Supervisors initiate a general plan, a community plan update in the Jacoby Creek Community Plan area to refine the, the density limits associated with protection of water quality.
Would that then make it to where it's illegal with the state of California then? Because I thought density couldn't be taken into account.
Well, what we would be doing is we would be basing any limitations of the ADUs on health and safety concerns, not density.
Okay, so, okay, I wanted to make sure that that language was out there then. So it has to deal with public health and safety issues then. In the meantime, would things be able to be built? And/or along the lines of what Noah and what Brian were asking is if, you know, an existing homeowner wanted to expand and their sewer or their septic system was not available to accept that expansion, would they be able to do a hybrid of some type? I'm sure in the 42 years since that study came out, there's been a lot of updates. And we've heard a lot about composable sewage systems and that sort of thing that, you know, you don't need a lot of water as well.
Yeah, with the, the way that the Health Department would consider those applications would have to be limited to what can be allowed without a variance or a waiver of any standards.
Any other questions for staff or comments from the commission?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. It was implied by a member of the public that if any commissioner had family members who lived in the Jacoby Creek area, that they would have to recuse themselves. I just wanted to ask, because my parents and my family does live in the area. My understanding is that general planning type decisions do not have the same type of requirements for recusal. And especially since I don't own property myself, I would not be required to recuse myself. Is that correct?
Natalie, would you like?
Thank you. I would say generally that that is correct, although I haven't had time to talk with you about the specifics or investigate in any of the specifics of that situation. But it sounds like you don't have a pecuniary interest. And the general plan, decisions that would affect larger percentages of land in the county are analyzed under a different set of standards.
Thank you.
Noah, go ahead.
Alan, can I just say you're, you're getting really good at doing this Zoom chair. No, you actually are. Like, believe me, I live in terror of the day when I'm going to be told that I have to be the chair of one of these meetings now. I do. But I mean, you know, I was going to say this anyway, but I will say too, like, I, I don't have a personal dog in this stike, i- in this fight. I don't have a stake in the area. I don't own property there. I don't even have family there. But I would love nothing more than to see more development in that area because I am a resident of Arcata. My kids, you know, went to school at Sunny Bray. I mean, I've spent a ton of time in the Jacoby Creek area. I, I observed that it floods like no other place I know around here. And that must mean something. So I'm a little concerned that, that we don't just like overlook, you know, that, that there's, I, I, I mean, I, I'm not, I, I have no inside information on this. But I do think the hydrology of Jacoby Creek and Bayside is different than most places I know around here. So I don't want to just be like dismiss this. But I also feel like there's, there's got to be some way that we can at least, you know, split the difference and say they should have to jump through some extra hoops. They should have to make certain showings to subdivide, to add a building. I, I think, you know, Director Ford made a really good point that we should not lump together JADUs and ADUs necessarily. A, a home expansion is not necessarily the same as a second unit. But either way, I, I would really like to see more, more housing in that area. There's got to be some way that we can do it that, that kind of cuts through the bureaucratic red tape and just says like, what do they have to do to make sure that they are not polluting, that, that their septic systems can be upgraded? That they can do it safely? Because there is a real cause for concern out there, but, but I think we can solve it. We don't have to just say no. That's all I want to say.
Okay, I'd like to comment now if I can, now that I'm understanding it's okay for me to have an opinion. So I feel like it, it's not appropriate to single out one particular community and treat it differently than the others. And I feel like there's a difference between what was talked about in a, in a study in the 1970s that we don't even have. I, I don't think that we should necessarily throw out this area when the state clearly wants us to be increasing the ability to cut through having to do, going for SEQA and all of these steps. I, I don't believe that NIMBYs were solely responsible for Jacoby Creek being singled out like this. But I think that the reason the state wants us to, to cut out any stumbling blocks is because in a lot of places, people don't want there to be additional housing. And so I feel like Jacoby Creek should have to meet the same standards the rest of the county does, which is show environmental health, that whatever septic service they're using can handle the additional capacity, or it's going to have to be brought up to the modern standards. And I would support having a, a special permit granted for any accessory dwelling units beyond one. But I don't think it's fair. And listening to the public comment, it's basically unanimous that we should delete it. And I think deleting it as well as having the Board of Supervisors look at updating the Jacoby Creek Community Plan is the right thing to do.
Thank you, Brian. I see Melanie has her hand up.
Thank you, yes. I just wanted to perhaps go back to what Commissioner Newman and I were bringing up last time, which is that what we're really trying to get at here are occupancy laws ultimately. I mean, we, most of our debates have really centered around how many people are going to be on a particular property? Because that's ultimately what produces the environmental impacts. It's, it's not how many units or, you know, per se you have. It's, it's really comes down to occupancy. And of course, that's a tougher one to deal with than the ADU. And we are specifically dealing with planning for the ADUs themselves. But what we really are debating about is occupancy. How many bodies do we have there? Because that, that is what the impacts arise from. It's not that the presence of the ADU self in most cases, it's how many people are there. And so I, I know Calif- in California and federally, we have some very loose laws. But I mean, we do have the two people per bedroom plus one. And so I'm wondering if there's any way that we could just say, okay, this particular property has the two bedroom plus one. And even if we didn't allow additional bedrooms, for example, in particular places, nonetheless, people could still say, well, you know, I'm going with the two bedroom plus, two people per bedroom plus one rule. Do the arithmetic and say, okay, my property allows me, let's say hypothetically, seven people. And we can say, we don't really care where you put those seven people. You can put them in an ADU, you can put them in your own house, you can put two people per bedroom in your, you know, your two bedroom house or, or what have you. And, and that, it seems to me that that would be the most sensible approach here is, is addressing it through occupancy because that is really what we're trying to get at. And that was what we really were trying to get at last time as well, when we were talking about some of the other parts of this. Thanks.
Thank you, Melanie. Ronnie has her hand up. Go ahead, Ronnie.
Thank you, Alan. I really appreciate both what Noah and Brian added to this. And I, like Noah, don't, I don't have a dog in this fight. But I can tell you that I do have a lot of, I guess, I, I feel for the residents of Jacoby Creek, you know, that possibly want to add an ADU. And we were mandated by the state to, you know, in, increase dwellings. And I think a 42 year old technical report that we may or may not have seen or have or don't have, or who knows where it is. And that's what we're relying on. I, I don't, I don't think that's good enough. I think I, I'm on the side of the residents of Jacoby Creek, even though I don't have anything vested in this. I just really think that we need to do what we can do to cut out the red tape and make it easier to add ADUs and, and still keep the environment concern for the environment in mind.
Thank you, Ronnie. Anybody else have any comments? Or would somebody like to propose a motion? We kind of had one earlier, but we need some more discussion on it. Mike?
Just a point, one quarter, we should probably vote on that particular motion and either approve it or disapprove it. And then.
But it wasn't a mo-
It was an opinion. Because in the past, when we were going through these, we were just agreeing or not agreeing. We didn't do motions. Maybe on this one, we want to do a motion, but it was consensus. And if everyone was in agreement, then we, we moved on to the next session. If not, then we could do a motion.
That's, that's my bad. I used the wrong word there with motion. We just need to come to a consensus. Maybe Michael could put back up the options that he had. And if we agree with that, we can move on. We have a lot to get through and we've been on this one issue for a while. So could we agree that the alternative 7A modified language would work?
No.
Mike, go ahead.
I just have a question regarding that. That was part of my question before was if that is the movement of this commission to recommend alternative 7A, what would happen in the meantime before the update of the JCCP? What would be able to be done or not done?
Would the director or Mike like to chime in on that?
So basically what that would do, since it is specifically removing the five acre minimum density, is that we would look at all the other policies that apply. And it would not be a prohibition on additions, expansions, JADUs or ADUs. It, they would be allowed and permitted as con- It, they would be allowed and permitted as consistent with the Jacoby Creek Community Plan.
Look, do they have any more modifications in that JCCP that is different from the rest of the county?
I'm going to defer to Michael on that.
The JCCP are unique, but they're
We lost you. You there, Michael?
Yeah. Are you able to hear me?
Yes. Can you start again, Michael, please?
What I was trying to say is the policies are similar to other plan policies. They're, they're not unique, you know, broader sense.
Okay, so, so from what I understand, and I appreciate Mike asking to clarify it. If we, if we make this change, if we vote for the alternative 7A, it, it defaults to other county policies that would still ensure that a septic system or, or other wastewater effluent treatment system is, is adequate to meet our county environmental health standards for that area, given the location and proximity to creeks and everything else. Is that basically what it would mean?
Can you answer that, Michael, or?
Yeah, I can take, I can take a shot at that. The if, if your commission was to modify it, then the special permit would be required and the ADUs, all ADUs would have to include an analysis of the cumulative impacts of the septic system on water quality. And, and in addition to demonstrating their compliance with all of the other requirements of environmental health. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, sort of. And, and I know that maybe this is getting, I, I, I mean, I, I think it's pretty clear that the, that the, the general feeling here is that we should, that we should not rely on this standard that was set in a 40-year-old document that we haven't seen.
So we want to delete it. That's what we want to do. We want to delete the Jacoby Creek specific language. And then it would default to the county general plan. And also include a recommendation that the Board of Supervisors initiate an update of the Jacoby Creek Community Plan.
I think Brian summarized that pretty good. Do we want to have a consensus on that that's the way we're going?
Sure, yes.
I'm with that.
Exactly.
All right.
Yep, yes.
All right, we're gonna Let's move on to the next agenda or the item that in this.
Okay, the, I'm going to share my screen again. We're getting into the coastal plans or the coastal version now. And the differences between the inland and the coastal version are there's, there's three key differences. One is second units are currently allowed as a conditionally permitted use on ag and timberlands. And local coastal plans require owner occupancy of ADUs on agricultural lands. And even with ministerial approval, ADUs may require coastal development permits. And so let me get into a little more detail on each of these. In terms of ag land and timberland protect the inland version has the, the previous, shown as the previous draft here. Is that all ADUs shall be prohibited on prime ag soils and shall be cited to minimize the impacts on agriculturally related activities. The Coastal Commission is suggesting that the language be modified to to identify that the use of land is the important characteristic of this section. And so the, the policy or the ordinance would read, all development associated with accessory dwelling units shall be prohibited on prime ag soils. And where there are no prime ag soils be cited so as to minimize impacts to the use of land for agriculturally related activities. And then we've been in, in additional contact.
Lost you there, Michael.
I'm, I'm sorry, my, my internet is not doing very well. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. The Coastal Commission is also wanting us to protect on timberlands. Include a requirement that all development associated with accessory units be cited so as to minimize the impacts on timber-related resources. And so the, in the coastal zone, there would be more protection of ag lands and timberlands as a result of these discussions that we're having with the Coastal Commission.
See, Mary has her hand up.
I was just going to offer Michael to
There's also a special permit requirement in the coastal version. And we had called out in the previous draft that areas of active or historic landsides and areas of potential liquefaction be required to get a special permit. ADUs in those areas would be required to get a special permit. And the Coastal Commission is suggesting that be revised to also include areas along a bluff or cliff where the proposed ADU is within the area of demonstration of stability as defined in the, in the local coastal program. And, and what that is, is that's an area, it's a basically a setback from the bluff that's calculated using the height of the bluff and the, the distance from the edge of the bluff. So this is another chain area where the coastal version is somewhat different than the inland version. That wasn't really related to ag lands or timber lands. That was more related to public safety. Getting back into ag lands and timberlands. The what the Coastal Commission is suggesting is to include a term that was
Can
Fifty percent of the total acreage could be used for ADUs in areas. And so it would be an additional restriction.
Hey, hey, Michael. Can I ask that maybe Mary share her screen and?
Okay.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that. You can talk. If you want to talk, I'll, I'll show the screen. If I can get this to work.
I have a question about agriculture workers. I thought one of the housing element conditions or issues was that there wasn't adequate housing for agricultural workers. So if you prohibit these smaller ADUs on ag properties, then you're eliminating that needed additional housing for the workers. So is there any way we can accommodate both?
Through the chair. So that, that is a good question. That is a slightly different issue. Certainly, somebody could build a second unit that serves as employee housing. But employee housing will be coming to the commission under a different ordinance. And so we will be addressing that separately.
Hey, go ahead.
Okay, I think I, I might have to try this again. Okay, there it is. Are you? Am I, is my screen up?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm trying to get into the correct view. Okay, there you go, Michael. Wait, am I in the right? Let's see. Which, which slide were you on?
Yeah, Mary, why don't you, why don't you go ahead?
Remind me which one we were doing.
Keep going, one minute, the next slide.
Okay. So we're just looking at two different drafts. The top one is the Coastal Commission's preferred wording, which is obviously the most protective. And they wanted the 50% of total acreage, which they thought was way too big. I mean, I'm sorry, the two acres they thought was way too big. So for smaller parcels, 50% of total acreage would be the limit. And then an alternative to that would be to take out that 50%.
So is the question here about whether curtilage can, can be as much as two acres? Curtilage only? Is that essentially what this is about? And, and in the smaller parcels, the 50% limit would, would make it smaller? Like, you know, a one acre parcel could only be half an acre of curtilage? I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm trying to get a sense of what's really at stake in this change.
Yeah, that is correct, what you just said. So this, the first option preferred by the Coastal Commission is reduce the amount of developed area on smaller acreages.
And Chair, so the Coastal Commission said not to exceed two acres per parcel in these zoned areas. Regardless of the size of the parcel, is that correct?
That is, that is what they would prefer. Although, I mean, you could make an argument for bigger than that even, but they thought the two acre limit was even big.
And this is for driveways, the structures, houses, as well as garage or shops?
Right, they wanted to, yes, they, they would prefer to include everything in that two acres. You can see where they're going with the protect the ag land route is what they're focusing on.
How much is an average size ranch with shop and barn and driveways and that? What is the average size?
Sure.
I have no idea. That's why I'm asking.
Michael, you have any thought?
Yeah, the the coastal plans typically limit the developed area of agricultural zone properties to just two acres. And, and so that's why it's being carried forward into this ordinance.
But my question was, what is an average large ranch style house along with shop, garage, driveways, development? How much does that take up usually? An acre?
Yeah. I'm not exactly sure what that amount typically is, frankly.
Melanie has her hand up, maybe she has an answer.
Yes, I just wanted to, well, first of all, I, I can answer that. I have about 1.6 acres and easily fit a home, a, a guest house, which is an, an ADU ultimately, that's detached and a shop and could fit more. So I would say two acres is plenty. And I, I also do feel it's more consistent with what we just went over with the general plan anyway. We were trying to limit development on as many parcel types as we could to smaller areas within those parcels.
But just so I'm clear about what's at stake in this question. The question is whether we keep it at the limit that the Coastal Commission is requiring of two acres or whether we make it two acres or smaller for smaller parcels. So like for Melanie's parcel, if I understood you correctly, if it's 1.6 acres, she would be limited to develop point eight of that, point eight of an acre? I mean, is that a good summary of what we're talking about here?
Yes.
Thanks, okay.
Brian. So in my experience, if the Coastal Commission makes a suggestion and you don't follow it, then it becomes a requirement. And so I think that we should just, unless they're controversial or we think we have some potential opportunity to appeal it beyond what staff is saying, that we should just accept these changes and go with those.
Is there a consensus that what Brian is saying is what we should?
I agree with him because it's just, it's, yeah, it's just setting up a fight with them if we don't, I think. So yeah, I do agree.
I agree.
All right.
I'm in agreement.
Melanie, you have your hand up, so what's your thoughts on it? Maybe you should never put it down. Anyhow, it sounds like we have agreement.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I wasn't, I had myself, I unmuted and then I must have, but again, I muted myself. I just wanted to say that I agree. And I also wanted to add that I think it's cost prohibitive in many cases anyway to start putting ADUs farther away, especially if you're planning on using your existing plumbing.
All right, sounds like we're in agreement that to go with this draft. So let's move on to the next.
Okay. Um, then the, the, this is another Um, then the, the, this is another issue that is a traditional thing in the in the LCPs, there's a, uh, there are two separate residences are allowed on, on egg land but where one is occupied by the owner operator and the other by a parent or child of the owner operator. That's the existing language. So the problem comes in when one of those allowed residences is an ADU, which the owner occupancy is not part of the state law, or it's uh, not allowed to be required. So at the current lap draft, I tried to split the difference between those. If you have two full-size residences, then we keep the old language where there's an owner operator and the parent or child in the second unit. But if one is an ADU, then the occupancy requirement goes away. And that would be, that's the underlying part in the current draft. So the question is, um, the coastal commission prefers the first language where the ADU, in that case, if we kept that language, would have to be occupied by a parent or child of the owner operator. And then the second, uh, in the current draft version, that ADU could be, does not have an occupancy requirement.
Mike, let's see, you have your hand up, go ahead.
So, question on this, um, about, um, this does, still does not allow the secondary unit to be sold separate from the main unit. Is that correct, Mary?
Yes, it is correct.
Okay. Once again, are we talking about the coastal commission preference versus, you know, what Brian had brought forth about uh, difficulty with the coastal commission?
Well, I think it, I mean, we could make that argument for everything they say, but I think in this case, we have the state law to deal with. Where the only owner occupancy provision in the state law was for ADUs was struck during the last update.
Okay, so the current draft is basically if there are two separate residences that are basically the same size, then one becomes the ADU and could be occupied by anybody is what our current draft is saying, is that correct?
Yes, if it fits the, everything else, all the, if it was two thousand square feet, no, because it wouldn't then qualify as an ADU. So it has to meet the ADU requirements.
Which is twelve hundred or less.
Right, twelve hundred or less and all the other array of things.
So what if the two residences were two thousand square feet?
Then you have two residences and it would fall under the occupancy rules, as I understand it.
So then that's why you have the alternative C two, is that correct?
C two is just an option if we wanted to go the other way and get rid of the owner, the parent or child occupancy.
For those larger units, is that what you're saying? Like I was saying, if there were two, two thousand square foot residences, is that, well, then the alternative C two, so that one could be occupied by somebody else, not a family member?
Yes, so the least restrictive is C two. Meaning all you have to do is have an owner operator there and anybody else can occupy either of the other units. That's what C two is.
The other unit, okay.
Yeah, so less restrictive than the ones above.
I'm in agreement with C two alternative.
Okay.
Melanie has her hand up.
Uh, thank you. Yeah, I, I, I really don't think it's a good idea to restrict it to family members. I think that a lot of what we're doing is so that family can live together. In many cases, that will be what happens, but to restrict it to that is, I mean, it's, it's kind of ridiculous. I mean, you have a lot of cases where you have foster grandparents or, you know, just good friends or, or people. I mean, it doesn't really matter and I, I don't see that something the coastal commission is going to spend a lot of time fighting either because it, it is kind of absurd to, to be that restrictive of who you can rent your accessory dwelling unit to.
Uh, Noah? You have your hand up?
Okay, um, yeah, thank you. Um, but I, I have two questions here. One is, Mary, thank you for clarifying that the, the alternative C two is the least restrictive, but am I understanding that it, it is not in compliance with state law? And it also doesn't comply with the coastal commission? Those are two different degrees of restrictiveness, and this is outside of both of them?
No, actually, this one does comply with state law. State law says no restriction on ADUs.
Sorry, got it. Okay, so it's kind of, it's splitting the difference between them, basically.
Right, and just to clarify, the coastal commission does not require in any way that this occupancy, it, it, it's not one of their rules. What they've done is they've taken a, a traditional, very old rule that's been on the books forever and they prefer to keep it in place because it makes less development in the coastal zone, basically.
Okay, sure. And, um, the other thing though, that I think would be, I mean, and again, I, I think we all agree that, that the goal here is to incentivize and remove some of the boundaries for putting in more, you know, affordable or lower cost housing. But it would be helpful to clarify where this applies, given that it's the coastal zone and these zones. Because I, I, I guess what I mean is, there are some places where this would apply that we would all agree are, are a sort of infill development that we want to incentivize. But maybe some places that are, that are not in bill, that are, that are more, you know, ag production lands and, and things that are far from services and, and those are not, I mean, for, for my money, I, I want to incentivize more housing, more affordable housing, you know, ADUs in general, wherever we can get them, but not anywhere. And so I want them to be, so I guess I just wanted to be a little bit clearer, if, if we're, if we're doing something that would essentially try to incentivize it. You know, where, where do these, I mean, AE to me, although I'm a little bit more familiar with the inland zone than the coastal zone, often pertains to places that are fairly far from those services, fairly big parcels, et cetera. And, and that's not really where I want to see us try to incentivize more, more home development, personally.
Okay, I see Peggy has her hand up.
Might want to have, let Mary or answer that question.
Okay, go ahead, Mary, if you can answer that question before we move on.
So, as far as where are the AE, the ag lands in the coastal zone? Um, I actually wondered that as well, and when I was talking to Melissa, she said there are quite a few small parcel ag lands around out there. But I mean, ADUs, the way it is constructed now, this would apply only on ag lands, so we're not really taking away the main incentives in more concentrated, like near the urban areas. Those are going to be, uh, not subject to this rule. So I guess, okay, I'm not sure if that answers your question. I don't think it's an inordinate number of units that'll suddenly pop up in ag lands.
Okay, that last, that last thing you said is, is kind of germane, so I think that answers.
Want to make sure Michael agrees with me. He's got probably more practical experience with this. Is that? Is he still?
Doesn't appear he's connected.
Oh, no. Okay, well, my answer's all good then, I guess.
Peggy, you've had your hand up, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't see how the first one even could work. I can think of all kinds of reasons, including who's going to monitor it. But like, some people don't have children or if their parent dies and then what if they can rent? Or maybe the parent wants to live in the ADU and the children live in the main house. I support the, the last, the alternative C two, because I don't think, who's got the time to go figure this out? Are we going to have our neighbors, you know, filing complaints? I've got somebody living in there that's not really my child. I, I just think it's a, it's a rule that you can't really enforce anyway.
Uh, Brian, you've had your hand up.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I feel like the first two options have equal protection issues and they are not inclusive to all types of, uh, familial and living situations. And I think alternative C two is the most fair and appropriate.
Getting a consensus.
Yeah, we're getting a consensus, but we also have one attendee that's had their hand up. So I'm going to open up public comment on this one, since we have somebody out there, so, uh, that person. Well, maybe they're not out there now. I'm not seeing a hand up now, so I, I'm going to close public participation since there's nobody there and come back to the panel. It would appear to me that we had a consensus working on, uh, alternative C two. Would that be what I was hearing?
Yeah, I mean, since I asked a question, this is Noah, I have no objection, so yes, I'm totally in favor.
All right, let's go with alternative C two and move on to the next item.
All right. And this, uh, the coastal commission made a couple of recommendations that have to do with the CDP process. This slide is really more for, uh, to just give information about what they've recommended. And we recommend that we do exactly what they say. So they have pointed out that, um, the categorical exclusion order for residences would apply to ADUs if they can be classified as an accessory uh, structure. So that's what three thirteen, one thirty-six, the definition we've incorporated, a statement there underlined that makes that connection, so that our ADUs would be, would fall under the exclusion order. Go ahead.
That sounds good.
Okay, and then, um, and the second, uh, changes to three twelve is another procedural feature that they've recommended, it has to do with notice and just how CDPs are processed when there's no public hearing. I, I didn't include those, the full text of those, but they're in supplemental five at the, at the end, I think section twenty-three and twenty-two, twenty-three, or twenty-three, twenty-four?
I, I think definitions are, are sort of what I was talking about, where if the coastal commission is making a suggestion and it's not controversial, let's just go ahead and move to the ones that are controversial, or, uh, we have an opportunity to, like, make a difference.
Okay. Consider that accepted then? I think that's all I've got, actually.
Wow. So that's great that we're through these. I didn't think we were going to get through them tonight, um.
There's not that many, yay.
Any discussion on what we've talked about tonight, any further discussion? Well, I have something I'd like to bring up. It's something I've been thinking about and, and with this, uh, whole ADU thing. And it, it's a bigger issue than, than the ADU, but I think that it would, uh, be worth having, asking, uh, Director Bronkle from Public Works to chime in on the issues of, um, road requirements and such sidewalks, et cetera, that go along with these. Because that's where I see a lot of the expenses coming in on these. And I know with the ADU that they're saying you don't have to do that, but I'm thinking that if we had the discussion of, of how to change from the standards that we always seem to use, the one size fits all, we'd see more ADUs built on lots. If the developers didn't have to do so many expensive improvements in the, in doing subdivisions, and that would, might mean doing smaller subdivisions that are, um, not the standard, they'd be private subdivisions probably. But getting away from this, that we have to have all the sidewalks, all the ADA, all the things that just really run the cost up. So I think we found, um, ways to make it, uh, more affordable and easier for the cannabis, uh, people to, uh, do development on their properties. I think we need to figure out a way to make it more feasible to do development for what I call real world projects. And, um, I think that it would be worth having that discussion with Public Works, how we could do that, how we could eliminate some of those very expensive things to get more development to happen, to do uh, more planned unit developments with higher density, to, uh, get away from what we see here as the normal, but you go other places and it's not the normal. Not every community has sidewalks everywhere, not every community has curb gutter, everything that we have. Not every community requires a forty-foot road, you know, a class four road in the development. So, um, that would be a suggestion that we ask Director Bronkle to bring something back, what our alternatives might be.
Well, could I ask, is that a, a motion that the commission would want to vote on and will make?
It could be a motion. I didn't think we had to have a motion to, to just ask a request, but.
Typically, one person asking for something on the commission isn't direction. It does require a vote of the commission.
That's fine, I was just making a suggestion. I wasn't saying that we had to do it. I just throw it out there for conversation and go ahead, Mike.
And I'm, I'm with you on that, Alan. I'm in favor of, and investigating that more. Uh, I'm happy to see that we've gotten through this ADU process in order to have more housing available in our county. Uh, we need more housing of all types. ADUs fill that bill in a variety of ways, affordable as well as, um, an enhancement to housing that, um, you know, is a little bit more upscale, but it adds, um, the availability for additional housing, which then moves people out of the lower income or the lower, um, less costly housing, so people can move up. So it, it does help in, in all ways, but I'm in agreement, Alan, with you. That was part of what I was going to bring up as well, so you must have been reading my mind or I was reading yours. But I would like to see a little bit more, um, talk and discussion about relaxing some of the requirements for additional development here, uh, for housing.
Maybe somebody put that in the form of a motion?
I will do that.
Go ahead.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to ask Director Bronkle from Public Works to address what we could change.
I don't disagree with the motion, but I just want to be really clear. So we're asking him to weigh in on, to consult with planning about what could be done to incentivize more housing or, or what he thinks of the changes that we're making. I just, I'm a little unclear actually what, what we're asking for.
It, it is to incentivize more housing. Uh, we're through the ADU, that is separate.
Yeah.
Then we have the need for, uh, more housing of all types, and maybe we can work on some.
And, and I'm well aware that Director Bronkle is often the guy who says, yeah, but we have a rule. We have a rule that says we have to do this or that, so we're kind of asking him to say which of your rules could you relax or not, or, or not apply that would allow for more housing? I just, I just want to be. allow for more housing?" I just, I just want to be more clear about what we're asking of him.
It, it goes back to what we were discussing a few months ago, I think, in, in terms of all of the sidewalk requirements, the road requirements, all of the, you know, the, the various requirements that add up to a lot of fees. So, um, a, a few months back, we were talking about, when we were looking at the housing element, talking about asking for this in, in terms of, well, what can we do? Can we have, um, a reduced, reduced permit fees or reduce, you know, just some sort of reduced fee for all of the extras that get added on when you build any type of housing, basically?
I think it's a hugely important question. I'm just wondering who we need to be asking the question of, you know? Like, is it, is it Bob Bronkle, or is it, is it John Ford? I mean, or is it the supervisors? Because we can't ask Director Bronkle, or sorry, uh, I'm not sure if that's his title, to not enforce the rules that it's his job to enforce.
Uh, I, I think it would be the supervisors, but I, I, I believe what, um, uh, Chairman Bonjio was, was bringing back was the discussion that we had earlier, um, regarding the housing element, where, you know, we would like to know, if we would like to see reduced fees, which ones would they be more amenable to reducing before it even goes to that sort of level of, well, you know, can we do it? Is there the will to do it? Um, we would at least like to get that basic information as, well, if you were to, and you know, we're probably presuming that they ultimately maybe won't want to, but if they had to, let's say, um, which fees do they feel that could be reduced and still respect the integrity of Public Works as a whole?
Right.
This is, this is Alan. So I'm not asking that we, uh, do anything more than have a discussion with Public Works of what some options might be to get the cost of housing down, okay? That, if we could eliminate some of the requirements, maybe he can explain how we could do that, how, what, what kind of a subdivision we could do that would allow us to not have to, to do all the requirements that we now are being required to do. I know the answers to some of these questions, but I think everybody else needs to, to hear them. And then eventually, it might go from here to the supervisors. But I think for now, it's just to start the discussion. Somehow the discussion got started that we're going to allow, uh, basically gravel roads and deer trails to be called class four roads if you're doing marijuana out in the hills, okay? So that hap, that happened. I don't know how it happened. I don't know who came up with the idea, but it had to, the, it had to be signed off by Public Works to go along with it and say, "This meets a category four road." That's the discussion I want to have, whatever it is. I mean, you go to other develop, or other communities where there's a lot, lot more development than will ever happen in Humboldt County. Um, and they don't do things just the way we do it. One cookie cutter, this is all we do here, okay? Go to Bend, Oregon, it's a, go to Sun River, go to a few other places like that and see how the development's done. It's a lot better looking than what we do here. It's a lot more cost effective and the people really like it. You talk to them and they love that they don't have curb gutter sidewalk and a 40-foot road in front of their house. They like that they have biking paths and walking paths, but not curb gutter and sidewalk. And yes, every place is different, but we only look at things one way here and that's, this is what we do. And something's got to change. That's one of the biggest expenses in a subdivision is all of that work, the cement work. And it's so difficult to do now with all the ADA standards and everything that go into it.
I, I'm so grateful to you, Alan, for bringing it up. And, and all I was trying to do really was just like refine the question, but I think you're right. We, we don't have a specific request, but it would be great to start with talking to Bob Bronkle about what are those rules? Why are they important or not? What, what do they cost? And what are we actually asking for, to change? So let's do that. Yeah, I, I, so, I, so did we have a motion? I support that motion if we did. Yeah.
A motion and a second, so.
And I'm.
Support, okay. Is there any more discussion on it? If not, I'd, I'd ask Laura to do a roll call vote.
Is no members of the public present?
There is one, actually. I just saw that. Thank you, Brian, for, I didn't got that. I am going to open up public comment on this and we have one, uh, person as of right now, uh, 3053, please go ahead.
Uh, good evening. Thomas Mulder here. I just want to clarify, you can hear me?
Yes.
I, I just jumped on about an hour ago. I had a different meeting, but as far as roads, that's what I'm talking on. Um, I would agree with what, uh, Bonjio has said. There's definitely some road requirements for multiple commercial activities in Humboldt County that have been relaxed, uh, not just cannabis cultivation. Also, when it pertains to cell phone towers and, uh, fuel trucks being driven to those without the, the fire access ru- rules. So I would agree that if some road restrictions were relaxed in, uh, rural subdivisions that were still fire safe, I think the cost of those could go down and then also you could have lower, more affordable housing potentially. So I'd support that idea if possible. And I do agree, yes, road re- requirements have been relaxed for two other commercial activities that I'm aware of in the county. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Debbie, go ahead, please.
Okay, hi, Alan. Thank you. Um, I'm Debbie Glassberg and I'm, um, with Home Contain. Um, I'm going to be trying to work with the Hoopa factory, building my, um, shipping container homes, um, um, the ADUs. And what I'm wondering is, um, I know we're just talking about putting these in the backyard, but will we be able to build like cottage communities in the future where there be just, just those units on a lot?
I'm going to defer to the director on that one.
We are working on modifications to the ordinance to allow that, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you very much and thank you for the meeting.
Thank you. Thanks for calling in. Any other public? Oh, we got another one. Frank, go ahead. Frank, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, yeah, my name's Frank Richards. I'm the chairman of the board of Building Lives by Building Structure in Hoopa. I'm an enrolled tribal member, um, working with Debbie. Uh, this, this discussion here is the ADU, J- JADUs, uh, for Jacoby Creek, but is this covering, encompassing all of Humboldt County? And what authority would this have on reservation land? Thank you.
We're actually past that issue, but I'll let the director answer that question because he may be able to.
The, uh, work on the ADU, JADUs does, um, cover the entirety of Humboldt County, except within incorporated areas and within the, uh, tribal, um, areas that are actually set aside.
Uh, seeing no more public, I will bring this back to the Commission for any more. Any deliberation or we have a motion and a second? Is there any discussion on that motion in a second? Seeing none, I would ask Laura for a roll call vote.
Alan Bonjio?
Yes.
Ronnie Pellegrini?
Aye.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
Brian Mitchell?
Okay.
Yes.
Melanie McGaver?
Yes.
With that, the motion carries. Thank you, Laura. And the director just informed me that we need to make a motion to continue the ADU ordinance to the next meeting, which was the date of, I don't have it in front of me, so.
July 23rd.
July 23rd.
So moved.
Motion.
Seconded.
Second, any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, Lauren, uh, Brian was the first and I'm not sure, who was the second on that?
It was me, Melanie.
Melanie, I thought so, but I was positive. Thank you. And so, does I have a motion for continuance on the ADU? Do we have a, do we have a motion on? Okay, now a second, okay. So, uh, roll call vote, please, Laura.
Alan Bonjio?
Yes.
Ronnie Pellegrini?
Aye.
Noah Levy?
Yes, yes, sorry.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Melanie McGaver?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous. Uh, with that, unless anybody has anything they want to add, I would take the motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second, roll call, please.
I'm told that you're, you're supposed to do everything with a roll call when you're, uh, doing it telephonically, so.
Alan Bonjio?
Yes.
Hey, hey, uh, Ronnie Pellegrini?
Aye.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
And Melanie McGaver?
Yes.
Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Bye.
Take care, all.
Awesome. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.